It won't just be like, "Smack, Michael, I'm here." He'll set it up with you, so. Yeah, "I'm here, you ready?" Uh, we're supposed to get, maybe, this contract signed today and answer a few questions, and I think he's gonna get started, yeah, in the next week or two.
Are, is not coming to, uh, pre-bid right now, or various contracts, or Stanley?
Oh.
Hey Jennifer, have you ever bid paper for us, or do we just buy furniture for stuff?
No, we used to, no, we do it, we bid that out with the heat corner.
Will you make sure data comes on your list? I did not know that they did paper, but they approached me at the meeting and said, "Do we do your paper?"
We do our paper through you guys now, don't we? We get to the same place, we don't do paper stamps anymore. They're higher.
Oh, I don't know, 'cause on mine, I can't get it to be, on the horse, to do a whole thing.
Let me ask you this though, Deb, what about all of the supplies, all the supplies? Wouldn't it be just as cheap for us to go and come through you guys and rest on it on our own? Why don't we do, why, why don't we do that, Deb? No, just send out something for them. Okay, then, now I'm gonna tell my folks, we're not, they're not buying crap unless they get it from the office here.
Most of the time, if she doesn't have stuff, then you order it again, but then like two, three days.
You guys do order some stuff.
Yeah, only thing we don't order from you right now is the, um, paper. We go through the state dinner, you use her paper now.
That's in the spring too. That, that bid, the paper and stuff's in the spring.
So, yeah, data comes as added.
Only thing that we use a state contractor, almost everyone uses that.
I guess it, not very spring.
We got a meeting nine o'clock, right? Let's go.
Alright, I'm leaving.
Well, they kind of. Cause they said they, their mark's gotta be on there before they're bidding on the.
Yeah, I think I'll let them see what they're registered for, I mean, there's specifically one that's like.
No, it's sinus, right?
So, biscuits and gravy.
Are you sure?
I'm going to the doctor ten, if you want.
Oh, well, she'll find out then if it's contagious.
I'm pretty sure they're not gonna give me anything, they're gonna go, "Oh, you have a virus."
You're sick.
She's saying it's sinus, but I, I can't buy it, she's going to the doc though.
It takes a lot for me to go to the doctor, so it must be bad. It takes a lot for me to go to the doctor, so it must be bad.
You just get agitated.
Three weeks, I've had this for three weeks, and like, I'm done.
Yeah, I would've caught it then, if you had it for three weeks.
You seem a little disappointed, none of us were sticking around for a meeting, I'd say.
Who did?
I don't know any names, but other people that were gonna be meeting. County gonna be here, none of you? No, we got another meeting.
Who said something to you? Missy? Randy?
No, no, not James. Some of the other stake or involved parties.
Somebody said something to you about it?
Yeah, so, y'all coming up? I said, "No, we got a meeting." Y'all don't really ask us about it, so.
What you sent the note out yesterday?
Yesterday, since we're all gonna be there, that, that's great, that didn't really help us a whole lot, considering.
And Mark said, I like Mark's, uh, little, hey, you can come out and help set up.
Tupac.
Well, they sent one out a week before too, though. There was one, that one was just a reminder, I think. But the one for this other meeting, since we're gonna be there, it's like, whoops. Yeah, but we're leaving. I just said response, "I can't be there, we got a meeting," and it's just kind of short.
You can still eat it, you can still feel miserable.
I don't know how we would've been able to meet there anyway and do that without posting it.
Enjoy that.
Even if it would've been a closed meeting. I guess it could've been discussing. We're calling commission order, we have you minister reports.
I do have the collectors, the clerks, and the sheriff's fees was reported to me.
Commissioner Committee liaison reports, announcements, upcoming meetings, and/or events.
Bury breakfast this morning.
Oh, wait, we're done.
Chamber board meeting yesterday.
Thanksgiving tomorrow. Analyst deer season is open tomorrow.
Does deer season ever stop?
No. January fifteenth.
Something not open today?
Nope. Bow season.
Oh, you want bow hunting?
I could be wrong.
Muzzle loader season, um.
No, deer, analyst does open today.
Okay.
The twenty-sixth.
That's what I thought he said.
I have a ED executive team meeting Monday morning, uh, seven AM.
Are you going to that then, so you'll represent?
No, that's the little group.
When's the big group, cause she asked me about that.
Big group is Thursday at eleven.
Are you going to that?
I'm gonna try to go to it, I think Sam's gonna go too, probably if we could.
I'm gonna try to make it.
It's probably good to be at that one.
Curious to hear what.
Well, since I missed the last one, and it was so exciting, and I missed so much, I'm definitely gonna make it.
Good.
I might leave early.
You know, I've instructed them, I wanna start at eleven, I don't wanna start, I don't wanna have an hour for lunch and chit chat. That, I got stuff to do that day, I don't wanna stick around. Okay, first item on the agenda is discussion and sign of consultant agreement for RFP. This is with Scott Grundon to do the security system, Jeff, you want it on the agenda?
I, I don't understand what this is for.
Okay.
I, I think we tell them we want security on doors, we want this to be secure, we want things locked. We have pre-bid meetings for janitorial supplies and stuff, I might think we could do the same with this, but I don't think we need a consultant.
I think it would help us to coordinate at RFP, that would be detailed enough for any vendor to come in here. It's such a specialty as far as what he does, and we have such a variety of buildings and needs. Not only the, the button outside the door, the swipe, to coordinate all of that. Also, at our juvenile facility, we have sound recording, we have old equipment. I would like somebody to come in and evaluate what we have, give us a solution for where we need to be, and then it would give us a better idea to go out to bid. If we just say, "Well, this is what we got," and we don't really even know what we have, I would like us.
Or if we still weren't what we got.
We do that all the time with just about every bid, and it's, this is, I'm not picking on you, this is mainly gonna be a compliment to our purchasing agent and to Donnie. You guys know what we need, where we need it, what the options are.
I don't know, I'm gonna be honest with you.
Okay, well, but between the directors.
This is especially, I don't, look what we do with our cameras, Scott did an excellent job putting our cameras in, but we're still having computer problems right now because we weren't aware that was going to happen. Judge Bead was working on those.
That has nothing to do with the bid.
It'd be the same thing with the doors.
We've bid the other stuff, and we're having problems with it still, and Scott did it. If we're doing, if we're having computer problems with something now.
No, it's not, it's, uh, it's, we don't have enough mainstream or substream.
I don't wanna spend all day on this, if you two think we need it, and we're gonna go on it, and y'all are fine with it, I don't wanna waste a whole day on it, I just, well, I really, I have full confidence in the purchasing agent and the other directors and stuff, put something together, have a pre-bid meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna say that I have full confidence in Jennifer's doing this, because I don't think she has expertise to do it, um, but just, just, uh.
I'm not saying it's her expertise.
Just to talk about it a little bit, um, I mean, I got real concerns with our service maintenance contracts and everything else on all these different systems, and I don't think any of them work worth a crap, to be real honest. And, uh, so, I mean, I think Scott could be a valuable asset, because there's probably certain things that we don't need any service contract on at all, that might be junk, throwaway stuff that we just replace, stuff that we may be able to service ourselves, and so, you know, I, I don't have all day to spend and look on the internet to find stuff like that, and there's probably stuff that's not even out there. But, good quality stuff, that maybe we can limit our service contracts, and maybe we can get all the buildings on the same system. And so, I, I mean, I think it'll be money well spent, I mean, look at how many times we, we go out to bid, and we get two, two people that bid, and they're not even local, and, and then we gotta call them in from St. Louis and stuff too, and, and I know some of those, uh, I know, is it you that has to call a guy from St. Louis, and it takes a couple days? And what's, what's that bill usually run us?
Every time I call him, it's a hundred sixty-two bucks.
But Scott's not even gonna bid it, he's gonna tell us what we need, and we're still gonna have Stanley bid it, and they're the ones we've had issues with from the get-go, so.
I'm not guaranteeing Stanley gets it.
Well, I'm not guaranteeing. Don't forget the best.
I know, but Scott's not even bidding it, and, I mean, I don't even know if I need to mention his name, but vendor A's not even gonna bid it. Actually, I wish he was bidding it, because I think what we have now that he just did was a product.
But then you get in a gray area if he was bidding it, if he's telling us how to put it out, you know?
We do that all the time, we have somebody help us.
Well, but if he's, maybe if he's a consultant, he, he tells us who to go contact to bid it. And we go, and we, and we say, "Okay, we want your system, give us a bid," and then if Stanley wants to bid it, and whatever, then.
Judge Bead, I contacted, uh, key guy.
Kevin Hudson.
He came over, looked at it, he thinks he can do some stuff with the locks, but he has a problem with the cars. You know, that's what I'm saying, everything's, everything's different here. If we get all into one house, it'd make it a lot cleaner.
I mean, for years, we've been talking about trying to consolidate all these damn agreements and all these systems, we need to get it done in one system across the whole county. And if that means we have to spend two thousand dollars to have somebody come in and tell us how to do it, that's great. My concern is, so we hire him, and he tells us how to configure it, and then we're back with Stanley. One bidder, we get one bidder, and it's Stanley. And then we're back where we were before, which is.
I don't really see that being, I mean, like, he mentioned to me that Tyler, I think he said that, "Yeah, I know a bunch of these guys on the side, he came by yesterday to drop this contract off," and he said, "They'll be wanting to contact me." I mean, he made it sound like he knew that there would be people interested, now take that for what it's worth, but.
And with the consolidation, and I don't wanna put any words in the sheriff's mouth, but he said it when he was here, that we could use his dispatch system for these calls to go to, so maybe we can.
For the monitoring.
For the monitoring, so with Scott knowing that, he can place it out there to that effect, you know? As long as we still get the sheriff to agree to that, because we don't get much response on the monitoring.
We, we need some guidance on how, external guidance on how to get down to one system. Cause we're not doing a very good job of it. No offense to anybody in this room, we're just not doing a very good job of it.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's a lot like hiring an architect or an engineer to help us with laying out a building or doing something else, I mean, you know, we gotta have somebody that's got some expertise, but.
If Scott's not even gonna bid it, we're not gonna have everything on the same system, because he's got those on his system. So, that's not the same system.
Cameras versus.
Those are just on our computer system.
That's exactly what we're talking about, is getting it all on the same system.
What is your suggestion?
We don't need a consultant, I'm just saying.
Then how do we do it?
I suggest that we, we, we tentatively hunt on the consultant's agreement, and I move that we nominate Jeff to be in charge of laying out the security system for all county buildings, offices, and the related computer programs.
If I'm gonna be our purchasing agent, I wanna raise.
Well, and then it included.
I, I want economic development, I want the Chamber of Commerce's money for all the meetings I've been going to, that they should be going to for economic development.
The point being, you know, Jennifer, with all due respect to Jennifer, she's, she's telling you, she's telling you she doesn't know how to go through the details of doing this.
To go over stuff then.
Well, and he's gonna go through to all the buildings and do drawings, I mean, I can do that, but, uh.
Like I said, what do you want?
Do you know what the janitorial supply was probably more of a pain in the butt than?
But I can wrap my brain around toilet paper, I got, I got that, you know? This access control stuff, not so much, so.
And we've never bid it out before.
Just one vote, I said, I didn't wanna talk about this all day, I'm not happy about it.
I think it's money well spent.
I agree.
And we, and I'll accept it.
I'd entertain motion to approve the agreement with Scott Grundon.
So, move.
Second, any discussion, call roll.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
No, thank you.
Okay. Chris?
Yes.
We don't spend too much time on it, we don't have to.
We don't spend too much time on it, just outvote me, and let's go.
By roll call vote of two to one, the contracts approved and moved forward, bid discussion twenty fourteen forty, Food Services Bringer Center.
Scott Grundon, oh, it's Precision Security, here.
Have fun, have a happy Thanksgiving, Donnie, thank you.
Yeah, actually, you wanna take it to Morgan, he's off.
Say he was gonna say it's Monday at four fifty.
Yeah, I don't know what it's doing.
I don't, anyway. Oh, that's when he's on the agenda I bet for.
Oh, that's right. He knows more than we do.
Which I wanna move through rapidly on Monday, because I gotta be in St. Louis Monday.
Monday night?
Six PM. Okay, go.
Okay, so for this one, we got one bid, which sometimes I'm surprised this one I'm not, it's for a handful of people. You know, none of the bigger companies are gonna come to do that, like, local caterers, but whenever we did the law enforcement center a few years ago, they were significantly higher, so this one, I really anticipated having one bid, that's what we got. They did offer us two cost options for outsourcing, um, ABL prep at the sheriff's department, and then we pick it up. And then option two was they prep it at the law enforcement center, and they also deliver it. You can see the different cost per meal, although that, I wanna explain the spreadsheet just a little bit. The dark gray horizontal sections represent, obviously, food costs, those are the totals across from it, the details for each is below it, okay? And then Debbie, if you wanna scroll down to the bottom, that's the cost detail, the bottom line numbers are gonna be down here in the cost summary. And you can look at the potential savings at the bottom. Now, the items that are highlighted in kind of the oranges shade, there's gonna be, I feel like, quite a bit of discussion here, those are the numbers that we're gonna play with a little bit, it's all tied together, so the summary should change accordingly. And then from there, I guess you guys can talk about the numbers and why you feel like they should be.
The numbers, we're talking about the numbers of meals, right?
The numbers of people served.
How many meals do we serve? How many people do we serve? I mean, we've been doing this for enough time now that there ought to be a number, and everybody in the room ought to agree to one number, and there ought to be no dispute about the number.
I'm not sure we're there.
That cannot be, and the only reason I say that, I've got spreadsheets for the last three months of what we had in residence. Beginning of the month, I started out with nine kids in our residential program, we ended up in the month at eleven in residence. I started out providing lunch for nine, and ended up providing lunch for eleven in September. In October, I was at eleven, and, and then I dropped down to nine in residence. Fluctual, my fluctual thing, I went from eleven for lunch down to nine for lunch. Then, and so far, in November, uh, I went from eight in residence up to fourteen, and then for lunch, I went from eight to nineteen for lunch. We have school there, so, they just come in for school, we provide that lunch, we do get that reimbursement for the school lunch program, even though it was twelve thousand, it depends on the amount of breakfasts and lunches that you serve, that you get reimbursed for. So, that twelve thousand number can increase as your numbers increase. So, if we take it, what the number that we used for here was fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five meals per year for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And then, then we look at our fixed costs for what we, for, for our food costs and for personnel costs for printer, the shaded one down there for the nine thousand six ninety-one, that was a one-time cost for equipment that I requested this year, and it, it won't be there for the next year, because it's only for that one year. Then, if you look at that metal column, there, for fifty-eight thousand seven oh six, that's the cost for preparing the meals. At that point, twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight is that the county would then hire part-time staff to go pick up the meals, bring it, prepare it, three times a day, at two hours per increment. And then on the last one, it would be, uh, ABL would be providing, fixing the food and providing and bringing it, and then taking everything back on an annual, on a daily basis.
Twenty-two thousand seven seventy-eight, explain that again.
Okay, that is, uh.
Can I explain that? That is the, that is what we would pay personnel, county personnel, on a part-time basis to go pick up food that was prepared at the law enforcement center at ABL. Over there in the left, yeah, that.
So, I, I want more detail on that.
Well, that's what I'm giving. That's based on the hourly rate, nine dollars an hour, six hours per day, so the payroll for that would be nineteen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. You can change those numbers if you need to, and orange, and then the benefits associated with that, fifteen hundred, a little over fifteen hundred, and then potential mileage reimbursement, I did add that in. So, that together gives you the twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and some change.
And again, the mileage could change if we used our own vehicle, but we'd have gas on the other end, so there would have to be some kind of figure there, so.
I'd like to get back to figuring out the number of meals. Now, Debbie, you told us it was a much smaller number, where'd that come from?
We went to, I went to Kristen, and I asked her for the reimbursement, that twelve thousand dollars they give from the state. They have to submit monthly to them to receive that money back. She brought down three, uh, she brought down the whole year, we took three months and averaged them. And then I thought, okay, we're at six, we're at six point seven. And then, so we went back, and I said, "Well, let's average how many people we're getting reemb, kids we're getting reimbursed for, how many people actually stay there," and it was a little bit less, so we figured seven. Now, is Michael having more children right now? Yes, I'll give him that, their money's coming in, they are housing more.
What's our average number per year?
They're, uh, ten.
Ten, per year. So, if I grabbed two thousand thirteen, got twelve months, and averaged it all up, I'd come up with ten.
Ten, average.
What months did you guys grab to get your six? June, July, and August?
No, we were like, um, March, April, May, so you still would've been in school.
In school.
Cause I haven't gotten anything.
I would say March, April, and May would be very analogous to September, October.
Debbie, you explain why you think you're getting more kids in there now versus back in the spring.
We have been staying fairly high since, um, August in our program, uh, it's.
Do we know why?
Kids are, we're getting more, families being referred to the system, and placement is there. And that's the way it was, if we go back two years, we were awful high.
And we're submitting reimbursement on all those.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
When's our last reimbursement sheet sent out? It would've been for October, since we're in November now.
I have a lag, the sheriff tries to get them to be quarterly, so I, I have at least a three-month lag from what they've submitted to, the sheet's coming to me, so she hasn't, some markets emailed me immediately, she copies me, copies it, leaves it there, once she gets three months where she sends them over, so I'm about three months behind.
I guess I don't understand why there's any question, don't we have daily reports of how many?
Well, what I was saying is, I mean, if the reimbursement reports we're sending shows that it's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, then we know it's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
But they're not showing that as of, you know, those months that we talked about.
Well, that was, so we have to look, I mean, we, to do, it, it's really hard to do the food thing. Because the numbers, regardless how you count them, are small.
We should hire a consultant.
But it makes a difference.
You know, when we did this, when we did the food contracts in the jail, the numbers are much bigger.
Just looking for a fight today.
So, you know, the difference, the difference between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and twenty is five people, but it has a really nominal impact upon the full budget. The difference between nine and fourteen, still five people, but it has a big difference in the scheme of the budget.
So. So, I guess I'd like a little more information, um, and I'm gonna probably get off topic just a little bit, but how many people are spending the night there?
On the twenty-sixth, I had fourteen.
And then we're paying the bus service to take some, certain people to school, right?
No.
Yeah, we do.
I don't take bus.
Through that NOS grant.
Oh, no, no, that's separate, oh, that's, that's totally different, that is a, it's two, a separate program, that's for the suspended classroom, when they're taking them from the two middle schools to, um, the lower performing arts center. That is completely separate, and that comes out of a DYS grant for that program, that has nothing to do with this here.
So, explain the kids that actually go to school at our center.
Okay, the kids that go to school at our center are kids that are transitioning into the system, are kids that have issues within school, and we have school there, but the post-school system, having a teacher at our school, and those that we have in detention, uh, they provide education, so, right now, we have three in detention, we don't get reimbursed for those in detention, we do get reimbursed for those that are, that are in residential.
Still be the ones that stay overnight, they're, they're still there, they're counted in the system.
Not, not, they're in detention, they're not.
You don't get reimbursed for the ones that.
Uh-uh, they gotta be in the school program.
For, for lunch?
Right.
But the, for, for overnight stay, we're getting paid for that.
My number is high, I've got, right now, I've got three kids in there, and then two of them are gonna certify, and it's because of the issues that we have. That, we try to keep that number very low, detention, we, I, if we were to take our detention average over a year, we would average one kid per month in detention, cause that, we don't.
That's the cell.
That's a cell, but right now, I've got three in there right now, and they may be there for the next month, month and a half.
But they're included in your breakfast and dinner number.
That is correct, because they're gonna be there. Right.
Well, we were including them in the overnight stay, they were still around the cell.
So, you don't, you don't have any that come back to you every day and then go to school, or?
I have, I have my members right here, I've got it up through the twenty-fifth, the numbers that I have for breakfast, lunch, and the dinner, breakfast and lunch and dinner are the, are the same numbers, that doesn't change.
Well, I'm just, I guess what I was asking is if kids were leaving your facility and going to school, and then they came back to you.
For breakfast, for lunch, cause they're taken care, it's only the ones that I, that I'm providing a lunch meal for at the center. Because they're taken care of. It's only the ones that I, that I'm providing a lunch meal for at the center. I have that on a daily basis. I can tell you every day what that number was. And as of, up to the twenty-fifth, I've got that number. And I'm not going to dispute, if we go back and go over a year, yeah, the, take the average, those numbers are going to be low, but then we go into a contract, they're going to actually charge us for the actual meals that we have there. So if I say, we say we're going to average it on ten, I say on-
So what is your proposal?
My proposal is that we go apples with apples. Because if I go, if we go with that middle option right there, and we hire part-time staff, I have enough problems right now just getting part-time staff to work an eight-hour shift. Now I've got to find someone to come into work two hours a day. I can't have one person, because that's forty-two hours a week. So I would have to have at least two or three people. I'm not going to be, if you, can I show them the picture of the device that's going to be used? I can, and if we're proposing that they use their own vehicles, I've got to make sure that they have possibly a van that they can put this in, because they have to strap it in their car, because it's each individual tray that they put in there.
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
That's my, that's my issue of trying to get part-time, let's do that. I'm not against it. I'm just saying the problems we're going to have getting a part-time person coming in two hours a day for breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
I think we had a couple of issues, though. One was the number. Which the number, we should have that report from Michael. I think the concern about that was that the numbers we were comparing it to weren't adding up. We wanted to make sure we weren't feeding staff. This is just the kids that we're feeding, right?
This right here, but we do-
Is that where we were at with the numbers thing?
I do have, right there, there's three staff. Right there, on that number right there, it says employees, uh, right there's three per shift.
Okay, I didn't see that part.
So that's separate out there, but then I have it for, and the reason you see for juveniles for lunch only, because we took the residential and the two additional, would give me twelve. If I had twelve there, so it would stay constant at that point. You know, because I didn't want to raise that, make that larger than what it actually was.
So are we okay with the numbers now? Or do we still have some kind of-
We have an agreement on the numbers? Do we not have an agreement on the numbers?
I think, I kind of question the feeding of the staff. I mean, if your shift is changing at eight in the morning.
Okay, I don't know why we feed the staff. We don't feed the rest, we don't feed any other county employees.
That was where my question came in, you know, I can understand maybe-
I don't disagree with that.
Lunch during the day, but-
But I'm more concerned with, do we have, can we get the right number of kids?
At this point, no, I don't have that.
I've got the numbers right here, but I go on a daily basis.
Pull a year, pull last year, twenty thirteen. Twelve months, run all the numbers, that'll give us an average. That doesn't mean that on October one, we may not have more, and it doesn't mean that on July first, we may have less. But it'll give us a year-long average. Then we have a number. Then we can compare apples to apples. I mean, I think that's, I don't know any other way to do it. If you take three months, if you take three months and you end up with a down three months, your numbers are totally screwed.
Or if my three months are higher.
Or up, yeah. I mean, if September and October just happened to have been really heavy months, and we're relying on it, then it's the other way around.
Aren't your lunches going to fall off in the summertime?
Uh, no, because I have a drug court, uh, program in the summertime, which I average ten, plus the residential kids that are there too. So it's going to stay pretty constant for that lunch program, uh, up until the middle of, uh, July. Then we'll drop down again to what I actually have in the, uh, residential program.
I think even using Michael's numbers, though, the ABL proposed cost for number one is still a pretty significant cost savings to the county.
You can plug in, so like, the three-year cost difference is that very bottom number, and you can see.
Three-year ca- uh, total cost.
Three-year, okay. They may have this contract.
Right, could have an inflation or not, yeah.
Right, and so it's going to be over three years for option, option two is more expensive, okay? Option one, the savings over three years' time would be somewhere between just under forty and just over forty-five.
I mean, I think that's a significant savings to the county.
Looks like significant savings.
Well, and then you would get into the capital equipment, if you want to get into that, as far as what needs to be replaced out there.
I assume there'd be nothing replaced if they're hauling over these pre-made foods.
Right, right, that's what we're saying. It would be an additional savings on capital in the kitchen.
Yeah, we would have to keep the refrigerator going, but that's not one of the items right here.
How much is our capital request for next year?
Well, Michael's request is somewhere around the nine thousand.
For, for next year?
And it's included in that.
Right, it's a one-time, it's a one-time saving.
And that's how the numbers-
Does that include the big walk-in freezer?
No, the walk-in, I did not ask for that.
But that's, that's the one that has problems, right?
Yeah, but the thing is, it's not broke, so, uh, most of the time, we've got to come, they come in and they fix the thermostat. We fix the thermostat.
On great, so it's about ready to shoot grabs.
Instead of paying six thousand at one, now we're paying two and three hundred dollars every six months to fix it. So we're outlaying that cost versus having it repaired.
I think the equipment can run anywhere from the nine thousand up to twenty-something. The way Greg is talking about commercial-type fixes versus.
The, what I have right here is the exact cost when I turn it in, because I put it out in Coleman, and that's the exact cost, but it causes replacements for the others.
Without the cost.
It's the exact.
Which is here.
Which, what Greg is saying, commercially, it would be about fifteen, but I'm not going to argue with that.
Go ahead. Why is it commercial?
I don't know, like, he would say it wasn't.
I don't work radio numbers, so I have to actually come out, look at it, and give us, I got the actual bids for what they were going to replace.
Check that one.
Well, let's, let's get to numbers, and then, I think somehow, we need to figure out, if we were to go this way, how we're going to, I mean, a little capital here is one thing. But how the personnel?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, seven days a week, so I could see that being a huge problem.
Well, I could see that being a huge problem, but then I could also see option two is there for you too, if you don't want to.
Right, but it's not a saving, so is it?
Well, it depends.
Depending on the numbers that you plug in for the people fed, it makes a huge difference.
So, take, take the three employees out, just, just to show you what a little change can do to the bottom line. So if you take, just feeding the three employees out, it changes that bottom line a large amount. So, um, like Mark was saying, a small change can be huge compared to the jail. Small change doesn't mean anything, because you're only talking about a total of ten, thirteen.
So, I mean, just, just to ask a question, would ABL be, they're the ones that do the sheriff, right? I mean, would the sheriff have any problems with them preparing food in there and then taking it out?
I had talked to him about that, and he was okay with it. And if we did go ahead with it, I think there would be more conversations needed, but-
Sheriff does get access in, getting the stuff, getting it out in a timely manner becomes an issue too.
And of course, obviously, if Michael says his fixed costs stay the same, I would say maybe his personnel fixed costs, but it goes up as we give raises, obviously. But the food cost, in my mind, would still have to go up too, if we had more kids.
Right.
You know, A B and ABL, yes, it goes up per meal.
But if I look at my average cost over the last three years, my average cost is averaging, uh, we had forty-three thousand budgeted for food for, uh, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. I actually spent in eleven, forty-one, eight, twelve, forty-one, two, thirteen, thirty-nine, four. Even though I have a, an allocation for that, that I actually spent at that point. If I look at my overall cost for food, it was forty-one, three. Even though I have dollars allocated for personnel, for part-time and all, if I try to get them in, if I don't spend that, I return that back to the county. So it's not that we've lost the dollars, it's that we have it right there in order to, uh, make sure that we have the dollars available to provide the services that we need to.
So you had forty thousand dollars budgeted for food?
Forty-three for the last three years.
So when I, am I doing something wrong here? So I took ten meals a day, seven days a week, seven, that's seventy, right? Seventy meals a week? If it's ten, isn't that right? Fifty-two weeks, it's three thousand six hundred and forty meals.
Times three.
Times three. Three meals per day.
Three meals, yeah, three meals a day.
And then plus the extra that are there for lunch only, and then we're currently feeding the kids.
Don't plug in the number of kids you have, because it'd probably depress you.
No, I was just, I was just, I was just trying to figure out how much it was costing the-
Yeah, but you got to do it times three.
Right, okay. So our food cost is about three sixty-six.
No, you just, to be, to be fair, though, be consistent. You got to do the forty-three plus personnel and divide it into that number of meals. Now, we come, that's come to about six dollars and eight cents a meal.
Well, that, that true cost per meal is up there too on the cost summary at the bottom.
No, I was just doing food. I just took, I took forty thousand dollars divided by the number of meals, and the food cost, just the food cost, was three sixty-six. I didn't count any personnel.
Right, okay.
I think we just need some more information, and, I mean, before I, um, I mean, I always want to look at significant cost savings, but sometimes, in my business, there's that pain in the ass factor. Okay?
Beat up.
And, uh, this looks like it could be one of those, if, if we have to haul meals from here to there. I mean, so sometimes that, that number gets exponentially bigger depending on how big that pain is.
Well, we'll do that, we'll, we'll set it for December fourth, we'll go back and get you totals, the average of the ones that we have.
Yeah, C V and A V, and they're totally different. Cash value and actual value, so. Michael, what are we saying on feeding staff? There was two or three?
Yeah, it's always, it was three, three per shift. But it, you know, I can just say that's what we have done. They cannot-
You can make us the bad guys on it, that's fine. You can say, the commission said we're not paying for staff to eat. I was just trying to figure out what the justification was for us feeding them.
Because my, we, whenever my staff eats, they sit down and they eat with the kids. You know, it's a family meal, so they're actually sitting there, interacting with the kids while they're eating. So.
Is it just certain staff?
No, it's just staff on, on duty, the ones that are there, uh, working with them, supervising them at that time, because they can't leave.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, that is different than, you know, public works with us buying them lunch, or, uh, the commission staff buying them lunch. That they're not sitting down with us babysitting us. Well, I mean, they do, but not at lunchtime.
So let's, let's talk about that a little bit, because I, I want to, I want to make sure that there's a clear difference, but, so are these people that are just supervising, or are these people that are instructing them, or are these people?
They're actually working with them. They do group, they-
So that they're either teachers and, and all those.
Maybe, you know, it's the same way with-
Well, we're figuring out why we're paying staff, we're feeding staff. Because they sit down and they eat with them, like a family meal.
Over supervision of the kids, so it's not, you have, you know, you have, you're, you're labeled as a cook, but you do a little bit more. She's in there, sitting with kids, she's interacting with kids during her shift. So it brings a lot more value than just, you say, cook, right there, but I know that, that differences of opinion.
But our teachers didn't always sit down with us, so, I mean, do they have to sit down and eat with them? Or that their only time to sit down and eat? Or, I mean, it's different than over at the jail, where they go, here's your dinner, y'all go in there and eat.
They can't leave them.
Well, of course, that's, you know, we're trying, you know, I think it's, it's really hard for, for me, because I didn't grow up like that, you know? I had two parents, you know, we sat down at dinner and, and we talked, and, and we did stuff after we stuffed our face. So, you know, these kids probably don't normally get a meal, and, and maybe this is an opportunity for them outside of a structured classroom to, you know, to get to know the kid, and, and maybe for the kid to open up. And so, you know, is that part of that counseling that's going on and, and trying to get these kids on the right road?
Year reglet, they're getting to know the kid, the kids getting to know them, so they become more of a, they get the confidence built.
They trust them.
So when issues come up, they're able to squash it before we have big issues. They're sitting there, and they're like, they're sitting there talking about, well, how long their day, but, you know. Uh, they're also the ones that's there to make sure, they're doing their homework, because they're sitting there working with them with homework. They're with them when it's time to, uh, instructing them on hygiene, the whole bit. They're with them from the time they come in until the time they go to bed. And then you got another shift coming in, dealing with them, with that.
So what do the shifts run?
Uh, the shifts run eight to, eight to midnight, midnight to eight, eight to four.
So Michael, whenever they are there at lunchtime, they can't actually just send the kids back to their cells and go sit in the cell, because I'm going to take my lunch hour.
Okay.
They don't have a chance to-
We don't have cells for the residential side of that.
I know, I'm just using that as a, okay, you guys, you know how you do sometimes with your kids? You get them fed, and then you throw some quarters out in the yard and say, go play, because I'm going to sit down and eat. So they're going to be with them any, anyway. They can't just go to McDonald's and have lunch.
No, because I think I might have coverage.
Okay, that's just what I'm clarifying. It's, it's different. And I think that was a question that we had from the get-go, was why are we paying for staff to eat? We don't do that for anybody else.
No, they cannot leave.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the timing kind of is what throws me off. If you're coming on at four, and you're eating supper at five, I mean, it's-
When you're leaving at eight, and you eat breakfast.
I, I, I don't know, I guess, in, in my mind, other employees who don't get a chance to go home for lunch because they don't live close enough or whatever, they bring their lunch, or they, you know. If you're coming on at four o'clock, you could-
So they either need to bring their lunch, or pay for their lunch that we're providing. Or we feed them lunch because we've got them in there.
I mean, I understand that the meal in the middle of the day, if you're working from eight in the morning to four-thirty in the afternoon, that middle of the day, and you can't leave, that's one thing. But if you're coming on at seven or eight in the morning, you have the opportunity to eat before you get there, or whatever, that doesn't mean you can't sit there while they eat. I, I guess in my mind, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the timing of it, you know?
So instead of three meals a day for each employee, we should have three meals a day that we're providing. Whoever gets it, whoever's on shift at that time, or?
And it's what we do. That, I think what she's talking about, their shift ends at eight, their eating breakfast is seven. So they're eating right before they go home. You know what I'm saying? So they've been there for seven hours, and now they're eating right before they go home. But that's-
I mean, I was just having a hard time wrapping my head around the timing. I'm, I'm beating you an hour before you leave work, but.
But I'm also setting the stage for my kids for when they go to school, making sure that they're in the right frame of mind, because I'm sitting down with them, they're having breakfast.
And, and, I, I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just trying to wrap my head around-
Well, you're a surrogate parent for these kids. And these kids are not there because they broke the law, they're there because of, because of the current abuse issues.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not saying in any way saying, yeah, I was just trying to wrap my head around the idea of-
I think it would help out a great deal, if, you know, the more you can be around us or see what we do and interact, I think you could have an appreciation of what the staffs, what they go through when working with kids. And when you have three shifts, it's tough having consistency, because you have varying personalities coming in. You're a kid, and so you, if you could just get the three of you coming in, if you came in at three different times, you're going to supervise a group. You're going to have a personality, you're going to have a personality, you're going to have a personality, but those kids are going to have to adapt to those three personalities on a global basis. But we try to work so that we have consistency for the program.
You guys are going to beat me over the head when I say, this sound, this is sounding like a twenty-fifteen budget item.
Any issue?
Put it on the agenda, everyone.
It actually, it is a twenty-fifteen budget item, and we're doing that Monday.
Yes.
Well, we will get back with you, we'll go back a year, we'll get the-
Get the whole year average.
And we'll put it back on the agenda on the fourth.
I mean, I-
The fourth is getting packed.
Well.
I, I can see your point a little bit.
How long do these bids last for?
But, you know, it's, at the same time, I try to look at, at the dollars too, and so, you know.
I don't think that's the issue.
I mean, just keep in mind that every dollar that we can save on anything is a dollar that we can put back in the employee's pocket, so.
And I'm not disputing having the right number.
Do we W two their, uh, meals? Don't we have to? Don't we have to? Isn't that a benefit?
I didn't hear you.
Do we W two their meals?
No.
Why not? Not a you can. I mean, are we required to? Isn't that a benef, and a benefit of employment that we don't offer to other employees, therefore- that we don't offer to other employees? Therefore, it's compensation?
We have never looked into that.
I mean, that's what we did with, we ended up looking at, with the cell phones. It's the same basic concept. In fact, if you're getting, if you're getting five meals a week, that's probably more valuable than the thirty dollars on the cellphone. I mean, that's something we, you know, hate, hate to raise those kind of little tricky issues, but.
Did you send us that spreadsheet?
No, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I messed with that last.
I can send it.
Yeah.
All right, so let's.
Can I just say one thing? And I know we have to have the right number. But we go with last year's numbers, and we say that, say we're averaging nine, and we go with the contract with nine, but our numbers stay at eleven and twelve and thirteen. Our costs.
But that's always, I mean, you don't.
But the true cost goes through.
But if we go with fourteen, and we decide, well, it's cheaper to do it a different way, and then we end up at nine, you know, we have to have something to work off of. And a year's average is a pretty good thing to work off of. If you disagree with a year's average, I'm more than happy to be willing to do two years' average. You know, if you say last year was, you know, I've been, you've been out there for six years, and last year was the lowest occupancy we've ever had, then grab the year before. I don't have a problem with that. But I don't want Cherry to pick three months.
Was twelve more comparable to fourteen than thirteen or anything? I mean, is there a year that you think is?
I have to go back with things I don't wanna say.
So, so let's bring it back, not next week, but the week after that. The week of the tenth. I don't know what our, I don't know where our meetings are. I know we've got one in there, because we've talked about it.
So, are we talking about what we're gonna budget, or what we're making a con, contracts for how many we actually feed, right?
Right.
Or is it saying we need ten per day? So, the contract really doesn't matter, it's what we're gonna budget?
Yes.
And I'd rather budget for thirteen, if we think there's a chance of it being thirteen, and end up only being ten, rather than have to do a transfer later on. Is that the direction you were going?
Yes.
Okay, that's a budget.
Let's do it on the eleventh. Eleventh.
I don't disagree with that.
I will be here. I'll be back. Come, come on vacation.
I'll get that later.
Be back with you.
Fifteenth.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Fifteenth. Good, good, good. I entertain a motion to go in closed session pursuant six-ten-oh-two-ones, uh, twelve, to deal with negotiated contracts.
So moved.